Good morning and welcome to the August 10th School Committee meeting. It is 9:01. I'm calling this meeting to order pursuant to the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, paragraph, as well as the Select Board's Emergency Order dated March 16, 2020. The Holliston School Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the HCAT webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Action Requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting to state your name for identification purposes each time you speak. At this time, I'll take a roll call attendance. Ms. Koshen.
Present.
Mr. Morton.
Present.
Just a second.
Present.
Ms. Naborsky.
Present.
Mrs. Lestevnik.
Present.
Ms. Hanson.
Present.
Mrs. Raffey.
Present.
And at this time, I'll take a motion to approve remote participation for this meeting.
Moved by Dawn.
Seconded by Ann Louise.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Ann Louise. Roll call vote, all in favor. Ms. Koshen.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Dr. Savard.
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik.
Yes.
Ms. Koshen.
Oh, you already did me.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Hanson. Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong person and calling different names. Sorry, Ms. Hanson, sorry.
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. Good morning, sunshines. We are the... We all sound like we're still asleep, so good morning. Stand up, cheer-y. Let's get some oxygen in those brains. So this morning, we have one agenda item. We are going to continue discussing the reopening plans with a vote to hopefully approve or not so that we can send this puppy off to Department of Education. So I would like... Dr. Cuska and Dr. Batello and I had a chance to just check in this morning, and I've asked them just to reiterate a couple of points that I think may not have been clear to some of us, whether some of us are here on Zoom or in the community. So I'm going to turn it over to them for a couple of minutes, and then we'll have some discussion.
Good morning, everyone. And I don't recall now if we actually shared the edited version. Peter, did we send that to them? I apologize for that. Had meant to do that over the weekend. So Peter, could you share the one that we did? And we took some of the comments that you had made on Thursday night and tried to incorporate them into that, so I apologize that you're just getting it now, because I had thought I already did that, and I will own that. But what we did is any changes that we've made in there, we highlighted so that you can see them. One of them that I made was that chart that I shared with you that Lynn Oller and her group put together with the aqua color in there to sort of explain the understanding of what leads to school closure or quarantine and things like that. So that chart is in there. I also took the advice from Lisa about the disclaimer, and that is right at the beginning of the document as well. And there are a couple of other changes. I know, Peter, you made some changes as well. Could you talk about that? You need to unmute.
Sorry, I was in the midst of trying to share it, so I was...
I apologize.
Yeah, closely. Could you say... What did you ask?
You had made a couple of other changes that you highlighted in there as well. Could you talk about those?
Yeah, so my head's in the clouds. One was about... You need to go... I'm going blank. Let me look. Let me finish sharing it, and then I'll...
Yeah. If you look at the highlighted pieces, so in the table contents, I also tried to highlight any change we made. So you'll see on the page two, the disclaimer is highlighted, because that's at the beginning now before the bulk of the things. Learning spaces and classrooms and school closure, those are the pieces we made, some highlighted changes. And so those are the biggest areas. School closure was the chart that I had put in there, the disclaimer, and then the learning spaces and classrooms piece as well. But really, we're at the point of really wanting to be able to get ourselves to move forward with a proposal so that we can get into the real details of how do we implement this plan? Because while we do have some weeks left in the summer, there's a lot to do to get ready for this time period and trying to really wrap our head around trying to make the most robust educational process, educational opportunity for our students, pre-K to 12. Keith, were there any other pieces that you had touched in there? I don't know that you had changed anything else in facilities.
No, just about the learning spaces and larger or bigger content about being outside.
Are there additional questions from School Committee? Lisa?
Because we're just seeing these changes right now, maybe we should read them so the community is aware of them too, and so we know that everybody's reviewed them before we vote on them.
Yeah, I agree. We haven't even looked at it yet.
Okay. I'm okay with reading because I'm looking at it now, the disclaimer. So the disclaimer is, we reserve the right to change this HPS reopening plan draft at any time. Additional guidance from DESI continues to be issued along with ongoing public health guidance from state and local officials. In addition, this plan relies on support from the Holliston School Committee, feedback from the community, negotiations with the Holliston Federation of Teachers, and budgetary and staffing considerations. In addition, the district needs more formal commitments from families and staff regarding their participation in various models in order to realize the proposed plans. Any necessary changes will be adjusted in this document and shared and highlighted for our families and staff. Is everyone comfortable with the disclaimer? Was there anything that we missed that we had previously discussed?
I really like that. Thank you for being so thorough.
Where is this document? I have not seen it. I can't open this up right now.
Neither can I.
You can't open the document that I just shared?
He just emailed it to you.
I was able to open.
I have not got the emails, is what I'm saying.
Hang on, let me see if we need to do it again. I just got it, Andy. Maybe refresh.
I'm doing.
I added you again, Andy, in case.
Peter, you select Lauren Morton rather than Andy Morton.
If you guys are... Can I read page 19, which has an additional... There's another addition, and it's on page 19, bottom, "School Day and Sample Learning Schedules." Last paragraph. Throughout the district, we will continually assess the effectiveness of our programming and whether we can safely and effectively increase in-person time and/or need be decrease in-person due to health and safety considerations. In particular, we will consider our ability to increase in-person instruction and lunchtime on no less than a quarterly basis. I'm reviewing that, and I have to say, I'd like it to be more frequent than a quarterly basis. In Massachusetts, we are about to undergo essentially an experiment in education, right? And because they're leaving up so much choice to individual districts, we are surrounded by communities that may move... My understanding is the majority are in hybrid, just like us. But there may be a few high schools out there that do have lunch or do have a full day, and we're going to watch that happen in real time. And if by the end of September, they're implementing that and it's going well, I'd like to be able to move towards that faster than quarterly basis.
Ann Louise? Well, I think it would be valuable to look at this monthly, you know, whatever the possible outcome is, because quarterly pretty much takes us to the end of this first semester. And it just... That just seems kind of crazy to wait for the full semester, to step back and say, is this working? Has anything in the external environment changed, or has anything within the community changed? So I agree wholeheartedly. Now, having said that, I don't think a monthly review turns into an exhaustive, you know, administrative burden. It should be, let's check in, let's make sure we're getting feedback from the teachers, let's make sure we're getting feedback from students and families, and assess what's coming in, you know, and what's going on. We need to be agile. That's a very important word here, and I think... Sorry, I steal that from my professional world, but if we can't be agile in evaluating the situation, we won't be able to pivot quickly enough if we need to, whatever direction that might take us.
And I think the goal for us would be, I mean, we're on a positive continuum. We're hoping that we actually get to the point that we can bring back students at the high school into what you're describing and trying to add lunch back in, because for us, the cohort piece really makes it more challenging at the high school to try to safely and effectively add that lunch piece, and that's really what is restricting us the most. And having the opportunity to have it happen in other grade levels and be successful with that will hopefully give us an ability to find a more creative way to then add lunch back in at the high school for more students as well. I mean, I think that is really the ultimate goal. And if monthly is... We did say no less than a quarterly basis, and certainly I know we're going to be looking at it much more often than that. I just worry about if you're looking for us to, for example, survey parents every month or something, that probably wouldn't be happening. But if you're thinking more informally, to continue to assess and get feedback as we go.
Does that mean the intention is to survey parents at least quarterly?
I don't know that surveying is the one I was... I'm asking you more. Are you looking to us to survey parents on a regular basis?
I am definitely looking for us to survey parents on a regular basis.
And monthly probably wouldn't be effective for that, so quarterly probably would be more effective for that piece. Monthly, I think we should be constantly assessing. I agree with the...
Well, I think monthly might make... I would like to see us maybe survey, you know, a few weeks or a month into the school year, say maybe by mid-October. We should certainly get some kind of idea, because this is also new. And then, you know, surveys, I think, will probably slow down as things settle down, if they settle down. But I do think we need to survey pretty quickly into the new school year to find out what's working and what's not.
So we can talk about that for sure, and I think, separate from today's conversation, we can have some of those conversations as well, because today is really about the conceptual model and trying to move forward so that we can get to these pieces, because the details are very important as we go. I agree with that.
And just building on Dr. Cuska's comments about the cohorts, as you know, we're trying to balance what is educationally sound and providing the best educational experience we can for kids with the real risks that come with living in a pandemic. So where the elementary schools were able to have very, very tight cohorts because of the nature of elementary schooling and some adjustments we're making, some major adjustments we're making as far as their exposure to unified arts in a traditional way. At the middle school, we're able to have cohorts of kids in groups of 11 with teachers traveling to them. Obviously, the teachers traveling to them caused some issues around cross-contamination, but still the cohorts are quite tight and provide the opportunity, God forbid a case comes up, that we're able to contain that and keep kids, you know, safe and in school more. At the high school, because of the, you know, some part of the strength of our program at the high school is the educational offerings that kids have access to, so we have decided to maintain the great, great, if not all of those educational offerings. What occurs with that is that the cohorts are not the same they are at the various levels, and that is the primary reason why we don't think it's... At this point in time, it is responsible for us to open up another opportunity for, you know, cross-exposure in the lunch setting. We don't have the staffing to kind of have kids just eat lunch in their classrooms. We're not sure if that's really developmentally appropriate to begin with, and also in those settings, even if they are six feet apart, we're talking about when you eat, you're eating, you don't have masks on. If we did bigger settings, we, you know, that is, some of those bigger settings, even if they were controlled and six or ideally more feet apart, you know, there's still masks off, it still opens the opportunity of kids mixing beyond even a classroom. So at this point in time, we really think in balancing the educational soundness with risk to introduce lunch as well as that fourth class at this point, you know, is elevating that balance in a way that we don't think is responsible. But the reassessment that Dr. Cuska said, that we continue to look at that, we will have a small group of kids who will be having lunch at high school, who are waiting for that three o'clock bus, so we can kind of work with them and assess, we can continually assess our ability to go beyond that, we'll assess the state of the virus, and then be able to see if we can responsibly, you know, increase that in-person time.
Ann Louise?
Yeah, I think the idea of assessment, review, survey, what have you, is separate and apart from the particular high school situation. I mean, it's enormously complex, and after going back and forth with Dr. Batello, I understand where you are coming from with the initial plan and why you're proposing that the last period is at home and online. I agree with Dawn that if there's any possibility moving forward, bringing them back would be great, but I think that's part of what would be reviewed as the first few weeks of the year unfold, and that's why I think it's essential that we do have some mechanism for feedback and that we publish that, if you will. Meaning, you know, first of all, this is not some big, long survey. That's not going to serve our purposes, but if we can take a pulse on where families are at, and importantly, where the teachers are at, to get an understanding, you know, just a few weeks in, like, how is this working? What do you want to do differently to make it more safe and effective for you as an educator? I think that feedback has to come pretty early on. We have to give it a couple of weeks to see how this goes, and then it's a short survey to the community. It's not 20 questions, you know? And it may be in the open-ended feedback that we get more valuable insight into what's working and what's not.
So I think we can...
That would be my suggestion.
I think we can add where we have on page 11, parent/guardian and staff surveys, those are ones we already did. We can put a line in there for additional surveys once the school year begins.
I would go a step further and say, within two or three weeks of the school year beginning, we will reach out to get your input. And we have to commit to that. I think parents need to know that's coming, and it has to be controlled, so there's not 50 answers per individual. You know, we have to be able to check that against parent IDs, et cetera, so.
I also think that if today we approve a remote fourth block, then we should use this as an opportunity to show the high school community that it looks very different than remote learning in the spring. And I know you talked about that a bit, Peter, because I think this could also be the opportunity to really show how it's going to be improved, how it's going to be different, how it's going to have peer-to-peer connections, direct instruction, and be robust, because I am incredibly concerned about the amount of lost instructional time from the spring and then going into this year. So, and I do think that we will have many other towns that we can look to and see how they're doing it and how we're doing it at the middle school, but I understand that at the middle school, they have a tight cohort of 10 to 12 kids, whereas if you want to offer the variety of courses, if you want to still have the robust art department that we have, all kinds of AP, honors, CP, sciences, maths, many things that we have, that these kids are mixing together. But that does mean, so I guess I just wanted to address, some of these kids, you know, sophomores, freshmen, very much take the same two, three, four classes. Are we going to try and group them together to the best that we can? Are we working on that in terms of schedules, where we may not have before? You may have wanted to mix lots of kids together. Are we trying to group, you know, as a freshman, you might take the same level history, science, and math class. Are we trying to group those kids together to limit the mixing?
Yeah, where the possibilities exist, we'll be trying to limit the mixing that occurs at the high school, yes.
Lisa, you had a question? Oh, and then Catherine.
I have a few questions, and I apologize that I have a few, but I got a ton of emails, and people stopped me in person as well this weekend. My first question is, if we are, for the remote model, is that going to be 100% Holliston teachers, or is there any chance that we would use outside resources, like from the state or what have you?
Right now, we're looking for it to be our teachers. Certainly, the DESI has proposed the LMS models and to purchase, and in some cases, well, in many cases, it would be a lot easier to manage in the remote with our teachers, but we really do feel that that's the important part, is to keep the continuity and have within the hybrid, and then if we do go to a full remote, to have it be...
Yeah, the way I answered the question for the parent who asked was that, and I said that I would ask the question formally, but I, I mean, I assume that we would always prefer Holliston teachers, but that we won't really know the answer to that question until we see exactly how many kids want remote and how many teachers are doing remote, right? So it's possible we'll have to do some outsourcing, I assume.
And potentially for scheduling purposes, if we have a small group of students taking a certain class within the... I'm thinking maybe some of the more selective classes, we could have an opportunity that we don't have enough flexibility with our teaching staff as well as our schedule. We may offer a few classes, but that would not be the norm.
Okay. And then my next question is around kids on IEPs. I got this from a few parents, that their parents who had children in person at ESY this summer, extended school year, are assuming that their child is going to be full-time as opposed to hybrid, and I'm talking about 4 to 12, grades 4 to 12. Is that not the case? Are we going to be able to go beyond that population? Like, where are we in terms of, you know, a rough idea of what percentage of kids, whether they're on an IEP or not, are going to need to be full-time?
It certainly would be a small percentage, and I don't think we've been able to narrow that list down fully until we have, once we have the model, then we start doing that work, because then we will have to send out to our parents, so who is definitively going remote at this point? And once we know how many students are not coming back at all, that'll allow us to assess how many we can safely, feasibly fit in the school, and that will give us the percentage to target. And once we know what number that is of students, that will allow us to open it up to more or less students based on that, but it certainly would be our most intense population, more of our sub-separate population to start with, and if there's room for more, then we will add based on need, if that helps a little bit.
That does help. I'm wondering if at some point we would consider, I mean, I think there are some children on IEPs that probably do okay remote, maybe even prefer remote, but then I think you have other children not on IEPs who are struggling, you know, maybe for more social-emotional reasons, and really could use the in-person piece. Are we going to be able to, do we have any bandwidth for assessing that and trying to bring back those kids, whether they're on IEPs or not, for more in-person at some point?
Those are certainly the details we need to get to.
Okay, all right.
After we get, if I can hit send today to our plan, then we can start working on those details, certainly with our special ed department.
Okay, that's fair. I just want to make sure I have, I want to ask these... There's certain questions I feel like I have to at least ask before we vote, even if we don't know the answer. I feel like we need to address it. Okay. My next question is, are, under what circumstances will we be asked to formally vote on amendments to this? Because obviously, there's the devil's in the details, and we're voting on something that's very broad in a lot of instances, as it should be. I'm not saying that, you know, we want to get too specific in a lot of these cases, but I'm wondering, like, to what extent you're going to come back to us and ask us to approve an amended version of this? Because I want to feel like it's a little scary to be taking this vote at this point in time, honestly. I mean, and I know we have to, but we are still five weeks out from school opening. We have no idea what's going to happen between now and then on a number of fronts, and I would just like to know that we're going to get another say in these big-picture issues.
And certainly, as you asked us to move that disclaimer to the top, the parts in the disclaimer would definitely lead us to. So if we have to substantially change any part that we're proposing right now, then we have to come back to have that discussion. But if we're moving forward with the model that we're proposing, the hybrid and in-person at the lower levels, then if we're continuing in that vein, then we wouldn't come back. But if we get to a point of having to change it drastically for any of the reasons above, financial or collective bargaining or otherwise, we would have to come back.
Okay. I just have two quick comments, and then I'm wrapping up. I'm sorry. Transportation, I've run into a lot of parents who have no idea they're not going to be getting bus transportation. I think we need to communicate that separately and soon, because I think parents are going to be shocked when they find out that they do not have bus transportation available to them, especially at the high school level. My second comment is, in terms of surveys, I'm in favor of shorter surveys more frequently. I think we really need to be taking the pulse, as Ann Louise said, on a pretty regular basis, and I know we're asking for so much, but I do think it's important that we have that two-way communication, and we make sure, you know, we have a good sense of what's going on with parents, because everybody, there's so many different needs and issues and things that we couldn't have even, you know, that we can't even foresee now. So that would be my, just my two cents on two-way communication, but thank you so much. I mean, I think this plan is very well thought out. I think you guys worked so hard, and I really appreciate it, and I will turn it over to whoever's next.
I think it was Dawn, and then Andy, wasn't it?
Well, so before, can Keith answer the question about transportation first, and then we'll move to the rest of the questions?
We actually, once you all vote, my staff and Sue Garvey were actually ready to go with sending out our bus pass application piece. We will be facilitating or allowing for parents who do get free transportation to sign away their rights. That was a recommendation I got during the last week from DESI specifically. So we will, they will be able to turn over their rights. Now, they can get back on, but we can put them on a waiting list, they said, with regards to getting back on if they do waive their rights. So we do have that avenue available to us as well, so. And they actually endorsed the idea of using, of being able to double your seats by using your hybrid model, but that, again, would lock us into not being, you know, light on our feet with regards to increasing our participation. So that's a discussion to possibly either have sooner as opposed to later, whether or not we want to, again, take advantage of the hybrid to double our population of available seats, with the understanding that it means we won't be able to add more students to our mix without the transportation guidelines changing.
So I have a couple of, I have a point and then a couple of questions. When we're talking about evaluating the experiences and how it's going, I just want to highlight that there's a difference between process and outcome, right? So talking to parents about how it's going is very different than the efficacy of how the operations are working. Sorry, just muted myself back. We can have a conversation about how parents are experiencing it and how the implementation is working from the parent perspective, but that is different than assessing how it's working from an academic outcome perspective. So I just want to make sure that we're holding those two things separate, and I think we need to address both of them in these, you know, not necessarily the surveys, but in the bi-quarterly or monthly or whatever approach we end up taking, we need to have more than one data point for how is it going. That's just sort of one statement. The other thing I was thinking about over the weekend is that there's, from a physiological standpoint and from a viral transmission standpoint, there is a reasonable argument for having the high school students start with that one block remote, because high school students physiologically are more, are transmitting the virus more like adults. Having them phase in more slowly and having them... there is a reasonable argument for having the high school students start with that one block remote. Because high school students physiologically are more, are transmitting the virus more like adults. Having them phase in more slowly and having them not be around each other for as many hours a day from a public health perspective, it makes more sense to do it that way. I don't think it's ideal. I think that obviously the best learning happens in person. But there's a public health consideration for having the high school students not physically together as many hours of a day. So that was my second. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, that's exactly what we want to make sure as well. We're trying to make sure that we succeed successfully with our students staying, staying safe so that we can hopefully then move towards a less restrictive model.
Right. So I guess prior to this weekend, I was sort of thinking like, how do we get the high school students in? How do we get them in? Like, what could we do? But the more that I thought about the transmission, it makes more sense to me that they actually would start with a few less hours and then move towards more hours together if we can make that happen from a public health standpoint. And then my last comment was just that I've been getting a lot of feedback and emails and questions about privacy issues in terms of the live streaming. And some questions that people were asking, and I didn't have answers to, were about people, people having to sign something like we always do at the beginning of the year when they come in for pictures and videos and things like that. Will there be a new one for live streaming? And then if parents don't want to sign that paper, do they go into the remote cohort? Or what happens if, you know, because in the past, if you don't sign the paper, your kid just like isn't in the pictures that they use on Instagram and that sort of stuff. But what happens this year if parents don't want to sign the remote waiver? Do they then go into the remote? I'm sorry, I'm saying too many words. If they don't sign the, the waiver to have live streaming. And I know that that's a, that's not the right word. But what, what happens next?
And that's something, yeah, we, I already talked to Dan about working on a waiver of some sort for parents because I don't view, the live streaming is not what we expect to be happening because I, I think that's what people are getting fearful of. Because live streaming is what I think of as what we do to this meeting. We, we live stream it on Facebook, right? That's not what will be happening with our education model. So if you look at what happened in the spring with the teacher, if I was, if I was June Smith teaching to my students remotely and those 25 students were on the screen in front of me virtually, then potentially what's happening in the classroom is being seen outside of the classroom, right? And that was happening in the spring virtually. So there is a need to make sure that parents legally follow their role as parents is to, they cannot tape. We're not going to be recording any of these sessions. And I, I view what would be happening in a hybrid model very similarly to what happened in the spring. Students are attending class virtually. They see and hear different things that students are doing in the classroom setting, whether it's, whether the student is in person or remote. There is still that back and forth exchange that students are witnessing with one another in attendance, regardless of how they're attending. But there is a need to make sure that students are able to virtually attend in class, whether they're remote or not. So I, how we balance that is really about making sure that we do put strong language in, in writing. We haven't talked about that. If the parent refuses to agree to that, where do we go next? We will have to have that conversation. So I don't know what we would do. We have to make sure what the legality of that is as well, because we do have to provide an education to the students.
Thank you.
Alright, Cynthia?
Hi, I have a couple, a couple of questions too. Keith, just asking about transportation. You said that they would have a waiting list for the bus. Is that only if you waive your rights to the bus or is that for anybody that, for a bus pass?
It would be for anybody. They, they would kind of get to go to the, the Desi's opinion was that they get to go to the head of the line because they do have a right to transportation. But if they waive it, you know, again, we get to give it to somebody else. But for the next available seat, they would.
Got it. Okay, thank you. My, I actually had something that I was considering wanting us to add to our document too. I took some time to look at a number of hybrid models of some of the districts around us. Hopkinton had a statement about requesting students to quarantine for 14 days before we start school. Do we have an appetite to add something like that to our document? I can read it to you if you want. I have it up. Anybody interested? Never mind, I'm just going to read it.
I think it's reasonable to ask people to stay within, you know, the state mandated area. Now you're supposed to quarantine if you go outside of New England, New Jersey, New York. Is that right?
Right, but this is actually quite explicit. Rhode Island too.
I think it would make sense to at least reiterate what the state is calling for. It's reasonable to ask people not to leave, you know, not to, you know, to be, to be very observant of that regulation before school starts. Cynthia, can you read it, please?
Yes, I'm happy to. It's, it's this, it's under, under a heading that says establishing healthy practices and policies. It is imperative to note that a healthy return to school only works if every family and staff member is committed to a suite of good practices. The Hopkinton Public Schools stresses that single mitigation strategies alone will not serve. Rather, a combination of strategies when employed with fidelity will substantially reduce the risk of transmission of COVID-19. The Hopkinton Public Schools requests that for 14 days prior to the start of school, families self-quarantine at home. The Hopkinton Public Schools are committed to following health practices and policies. And they talked about behavioral expectations, et cetera, and, and physical plant and other, other issues about cleaning, et cetera.
So I think it would require it. I know.
No, it requests it.
Right, for extended school year, the students were asked if they had traveled outside of specific states. Are we asking each family to certify whether they traveled outside of specific states or to specific states? Are, are we requesting for the fall year, for families to answer whether they've traveled outside of New England?
They are going to have to fill something out, right? Peter, the form that Lynn used in the summer, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll have some process by, it's about stuff like travel, but it's also around exposure to other positive cases or being symptomatic. So there will be some questions along those lines.
Will it be the same? I mean, I can tell you, I filled it out every day for five weeks, so I can tell you exactly what it said. Is it going to be the same form or is it going to be significantly different?
It will have some alterations, but probably, but not, I think it'll be similar.
Okay.
And then do we have an explicit statement about following whatever the governor's directives are regarding quarantining if they do travel outside of the state? Do we have that explicitly in the document? I'm sorry, I read like 10 of them this weekend, so now I'm just.
I don't think it is as explicit as you described. So if you wanted to share that language with us, we can look to how we could potentially add that in.
Cynthia, the language, I, I do agree with Lisa that if we can pull from the state language, I like Hopkinton's statement, but maybe it's as simple as if they do end up traveling outside the state because some people have pre-committed plans, et cetera, that they have to present a negative COVID test. And that's, that's possible to do. We just went to the center in Milford, the pop-up center, you know, in downtown Milford, and we should have the results tomorrow. You know, if you're traveling outside of state, that might be the best that you can do.
And there's that new one in Framingham, thanks to Senator, Senate President Spilka.
Oh, that's nice.
Yep. Couldn't find that one.
Okay, I'm wondering if we could then include maybe a testing site map. Other, other districts have done that too and make it easier for us to do that on the state guidelines. What else was I going to say? And just thinking about transportation again, we're going to need more crossing guards. I'm not sure whether, maybe you already discussed that as part, part of a financial issue. But if there's more kids that are going to be walking or riding bikes, I'm concerned about kids crossing, you know, from the Queens, for example, into, onto Winter Street to go cut through Mellon to get to the high school. There will be more kids, like masses of them from my neighborhood that are going in that direction, I think, that will not be eligible for bus transportation. So I just want to be thoughtful about whether we're having some discussions about crossing guards. I had some questions about deep cleaning from some people about whether, you know, whether there was a reason that we should be taking, you know, a half day or part of our day on Wednesday to do deep cleaning on a regular basis? Or what exactly are, are sprayers, what the disinfectants are, et cetera? I don't, maybe that language could be just, you know, more explicit from our cleaning protocols. I thought, sorry, that was for Keith. I'm like staring at Keith going, hello?
I'm writing.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I mean, the, the, the sprayers are an industry standard sprayer. They use a EPA-approved disinfectant. I mean, that's, you know, to, to put a specific disinfectant down as it goes in and out of stock is not go with regards to that. But we could certainly add some language saying that we would use an EPA-approved disinfectant, so.
Okay, and that there's a significant difference between sanit, or disinfecting and cleaning to the point where something is stain-free, right? Like something can be free of germs, but not necessarily be like look like it's, I don't know, like something could be, it's still an old garment with stains on it, but it could be clean, right?
Correct. I would say that again, we are doing disinfecting. We are not, you know, we're not going to, we can't turn ourselves into a hospital.
Right, okay. I think that's it for me for right now. Thank you all.
Okay, sorry, Andy, Dawn, I know you have questions, but I'm going to call you next.
The concern I see with, with this right now is especially with the high school popping home for their, their last block of the day. And I, I don't know that I necessarily have a concern, but I think it probably makes sense at this point. Is, I'm not aware that the MIAA has come out with another statement and we may be starting fall sports on September 14th, which would pretty much ruin any positive impact of having the kids out at for their last block of the day. So do we have the option of opting out if they make a decision that is kind of counterproductive to what we're trying to do with our student body at the high school is first question? And then the second one is just more of a statement around the transportation. I heard from several people who would be happy to opt out, but really I'm concerned about how we're going to manage if the state says, yeah, go ahead to fall sports and we're in a hybrid model and trying to keep kids as separate as we can and sending our kids home early and then suddenly full contact practice starts up. So do we have the option to go against guidelines in regards to sports if it doesn't work for us?
Are you saying, are we able to opt out of fall sports even if the state doesn't, right?
Yes, correct.
I believe we do have the ability to say that. And it seems more likely that they're going to delay sports much further than that, but it could be.
That's what I expected, but just in case.
Dawn?
As to sports, I just want to say that we're not making a decision on sports today. And any decision that we make is, I don't think it should just be this crew. I think we need a robust discussion within the community about that. I know that Dr. Savard talked about transmission rates for high school. I just also want to recall, and again, this is all about mitigation of risk, but it also has a lot to do with infection rates. And we're seeing a lot in the news right now about Georgia, but we don't cancel school or go half-day when Florida has a hurricane. And we also don't cancel school when Ohio has a blizzard. So the relevant factor is the infection rates here in Massachusetts or New England or possibly even just within our Metro West community or even our town. So I just want to make sure, and I think there's part of that that may have been altered within this plan. And so I think we should read that out loud and have a discussion about that. So that's, that's, so one, sports, two, infection rate. As to transportation, I am, I, I've looked at the high school schedule. I know we've had a lot of conversations about it. My inclination last week was to shorten that transportation time from 60 minutes down to 45 or 40 minutes. But I really had to give that some thought and think about the kids that are not going to get the bus. We are required by the state to provide transportation for children K through six, is that correct? Who are more than two miles? And this will go to a lottery system. Now, in a hybrid model, you have half the kids riding, but there are still going to be families without transportation. And there will be kids walking or bike riding out to the Queens. And so maybe it is in the best interest of this community to give them that full hour. Other benefit I thought I saw with dismissing the kids at 12:43 is that there are kids that will be dismissed from Miller at one. And we heard a lot with regards to school start time about how older kids do have to pick up or be responsible for getting off the bus, the younger kids. So I do think there is some benefit in that 12:43 to 1:43. But the other part about the high school schedule that gives me pause is that we're giving them 10 minutes in between classes. I just want to be clear because I think before this pre-pandemic, Peter, did we give them three or four minutes in between classes?
Honestly, I don't, I don't know.
I think it might be as short as three or four, and I'm really concerned.
Four minutes.
Four. So 10 minutes. And I understand there's going to be one-way hallways and we're going to have freshmen in there that, that are going to be in masks trying to figure out where they're going. But I do think it could lead to some congregating. So I really want you guys to watch and be flexible. And if we have to shorten it to six or seven minutes, let's see what works, right? And get back that instructional time because that, that is a concern for me. You know, it's a small concern, but I think 10 minutes could lead to more congregating than, than really the time they need to one-way around to their next class. You know, in terms of the live streaming, I think we also have to have a robust conversation about, and I, I, again, I don't think the term is live streaming. This isn't an MGM production where everyone's mic'd and we have a full, you know, multi-camera panoramic view of the classroom. I, I think of it more like podcast instruction. And I see the pro as, and maybe the video is the teacher and the audio is mostly the teacher. Recalling that that teacher is going to have a mask on and there's going to be kids sitting 20, 25 feet back with masks on. I'm not convinced any of that's caught on the audio, but this is a work in progress. We have to figure all of this out, I think. But the pro of this, especially at, or I guess the pro that I see is that if we don't do that, then the remote kids may not get the level of instruction that they need. And we have a lot of curriculum to teach here. And it's difficult to teach yourself algebra or Spanish or history. And if we don't do this, then you're only in class half the time. And then your teacher is reteaching what she taught the kids when they were live. And, and I just don't know how we cover the curriculum if we don't, i- if we don't work through a model like this. So I just want to make sure I'm, I'm, like, that we're really talking about the pros of this too. Because some kids will really struggle if they have to use packets or projects to teach themselves geometry or, you know, A P physics. So I think the instruction part is really important. I don't think I have any more questions on this part, but we do still have to talk about that phased-in portion, and there are still more edits to this too that we should go over.
Ann-Louise?
I, so I have a question about transportation. I want to talk about live streaming. I thought we were going to do this kind of more in topic, so I apologize for bringing this back. But so with respect to the transportation, Keith, help me out because I know, I think you tried to explain this to me the other day, but I'm not sure I got it. Instead of trying to offer buses at 3 o'clock for the small percentage of children who are left at the high school at that point, why wouldn't we offer the buses at the release, what is it, sorry, 12? 12:43, I'm not going to get that right, but the release just before the second-to-last period? Because if I do the math on this, we're probably down to like 300 students at that point. And some of them won't be coming home anyway for other reasons. The seniors aren't, you know, a lot of the seniors will be driving themselves. So that, you know, that's kind of how I got down to this number of 300. And then if you look at the 15 buses available, even with 26 seats available per bus, you could do it, but I don't know if there's a time conflict with the middle school and Miller. So I, you know, I'm not, I didn't think that through. But it seems to me it would be more prudent to offer families that bus option, especially for the ninth and 10th graders, to get them home. Because I think the thing that's getting lost in the shuffle here is that's not a transportation hour. It's a transportation and lunch hour. These kids have to get home, get some food in their bellies so they can focus for that last hour of remote learning and be able to, you know, get back to their desk, set up their Chromebook and sign in again. And that's a lot to accomplish in that one hour. So am I missing something? Is there a way to use the buses earlier rather than at 3 o'clock?
Well, the, the, the first problem is that you're now adding a fourth run potentially. So there's an additional significant cost with that. Add to that the fact that with Miller dismissing it at, excuse me, with the, the high school dismissing it 12:43, they will never get back to Miller. they will never get back to Miller School for one o'clock. So you're now dealing with having the Miller kids sit around for another half an hour of unsupervised time or not, certainly not teacher-supervised time, because again, that's the prep time. Remember in the model we built, it's, it's, the 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 prep time is gonna be all at the end of the day at the elementary complex. So, you know, because we're not, we're not mixing the cohorts, we're mixing the cohorts as little as possible at the elementary complex. So again, if we, if we were to push the Miller, the Miller dismissal time to one thirty, say, to to be able to account for the transportation, um, again, you're looking with with students that will have be being supervised. It wouldn't be educational time, and they wouldn't be able to do the asynchronous unified arts at that, you know, at that point either. So it's, it's, the timing doesn't work.
Don't they have to clean the buses in between the runs too?
Wait, the timing doesn't work because of when we're starting and stopping each of the buildings? And I guess that's actually what I'm asking. Is there a way to adjust this slightly, even fifteen minutes? You know, so that we're not creating a detrimental challenge to any of the buildings in terms of their start times. God forbid I open that pinned doors box. But I mean, we're talking about a lot of students who are now gonna be left to their own devices to get to and from school, and we're assuming it's okay because they're ninth and tenth graders, and maybe that's not okay. I mean, I am kind of concerned about that.
I I I think we all are as well. We're just trying to work under the the safest possible plan by keeping co-horted students co-horted.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And, you know, trying to, again, it's, it's not gonna be perfect. I can't emphasize that enough.
What happens when it's like a downpour? And these kids are walking in the rain or riding their bikes in the rain, or it's freezing weather, or God forbid a snowstorm, how does that work?
My guess is is that we would end up with more children at the school waiting for someone to pick them up, you know, in a safe fashion, as opposed to them finding their own methods of getting home.
And so then we've got those four hundred kids sitting in a classroom, waiting with teachers, not eating lunch because they didn't bring it.
Well, we will be serving lunch. We will be serving lunch, so that is, you know, again, that is there. I mean, it's, it'll be a bagged lunch. Um, but it'll still be.
How would they, they're not allowed to eat it. I mean, I'm just, I guess I would just ask, like, is there a way to look at those start and stop times to see if it isn't possible to give those students the access to transportation if they, I mean, I get it. We're not mandated by the state. I get it, but that doesn't change the practical problems that we've got two to three grades of students who are really being, and and I agree, like, a lot of parents have no idea this is coming down the pike.
Well, a- again, it's not like we haven't said it repeatedly. Um, I think we all know transportation is the gatekeeper. And the the challenge with with, again, any of these plans, is that we have to make certain assumptions. And in the assumption where, um, you know, non-mandated transportation could create a challenge for some some cohort of students, yes. I mean, it's, it's going to. There's, there's no question about it. And the the piece of, you know, foul weather or or whatever it is, I, we just have to, again, try to work within the, you know, the constraints with which we have. I can't do anything creative at Miller with regards to the students, otherwise they're going to be unsupervised in a classroom or spending non-academic time in a classroom with a paraprofessional. The teachers get, have their, have their prep time, and that's contractually mandated.
I understand that, but if they started fifteen minutes later, does that bump into another route?
That would be then the Adams, the middle school and high school runs would be then potentially later as well. We didn't build in any additional time for cleaning, assuming the lesser number of students on the buses would basically be a wash for the cleaning time on the bus. So, you know, that that was one of our assumptions. So if I'm cutting into that time, the time I'm cutting into is either cleaning time or instructional time for the, say, for the high school, middle school.
Okay, I guess, all right. Well, I'll move on. I'm, I'm concerned about this. I have the worst feeling that this transportation piece is going to be a real issue for the high school kids.
The seventh and eighth too. The middle school too.
Yeah, except it, but it, I don't think they're on the same, well.
Yes, they are.
It's a problem. It's a problem the way this is, this is the one piece that I feel is, is not totally totally sorted out. Um, with respect to the live stream, I think we just gotta not use that word. This is not live streaming. These are private Zoom calls. They're private to the classroom and the teacher. And that has very different implications than public live streaming, and it is not public live streaming. So I think those are the words that we clarify in the document, that we will not be conducting private, public live streaming. This is, these are private Zoom calls, um, and and that is the distinction. And that that falls within the, um, general protections that the schools provide for student privacy. Um, and maybe we need to speak out, counsel on exactly what that wording is. But I think there's a definite distinction between the two. With respect to sports, I completely agree with Dawn. I think that's a bigger conversation and maybe separate. And definitely want to understand what, um, what the MIAA is is recommending. I don't, I don't think they've come down with final word yet. Um, but if we choose to do something different than what the MIAA recommends, I, that's a bigger discussion. And I think that goes to the point of any substantive changes to this plan, anything that affects schedule, timing, who's in school, who's not, um, adjustments to curriculum in terms of offerings, et cetera. I think that does have to come back to the school committee. So I just want to be clear that we don't want to hamstring you, but is that, if those sorts of things are happening, then I think we need to be apprised of it and, um, be able to address that. Not that. Thank you. Thank you for everything. I know it's been a lot, and you've put a ton of effort into this.
So can we continue to go through the, um, review the edits? Um, I think we're on, actually, you know what? I'm looking at my phone, so I don't have a page number. Um, but I think the next set of edits were the, the phase four on September sixteen, students would be.
Page twenty, bottom of page twenty.
I also just sent everybody an email with some suggested language based on what Cynthia brought up from Hopkinton. I sent it to everyone, so it's short, but could we look at that and maybe yay or nay or edit that?
Lisa, do you want to read it out loud?
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. So I wrote, um, "We know that our behavior as a community will impact our ability to stay open. We ask families to be especially careful about exposure in the fourteen days before school starts by wearing masks, limiting contact with people outside your family, and observing safe hygiene practices as outlined by state and federal public health authorities. In particular, please be aware that anyone who travels outside the area defined as low-risk by the Commonwealth is required to quarantine at home for fourteen days. Currently, low-risk states include Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, Connecticut, New York, and New Jersey. Actually, Hawaii's on there too, but I didn't put that. But please refer to the state website for updates. And then there's the link to the state website and the travel order. Um, but I'm already seeing, I mean, I guess we should put Hawaii in there just to be accurate, um, but I also think that we should make it clear that this isn't just the fourteen days before school starts. This is, you know, as long as we continue sending children to school.
I, I would like to change currently to as of August tenth, only because this is gonna be published for the community. And as of August tenth, low-risk states, but please refer to the state website for updates.
Okay, so I'll, I'll edit it while you guys talk, um, and then I can send a revised version to everyone.
Thank you, Lisa.
We could put in there, families will be asked about recent travel. And then do we know if it's daily? Is it weekly? We, we, we should give them the heads up, right?
There is that checklist is embedded in the, um, health, this daily checklist. Uh, let me just see, it's page twenty-eight, I think I saw it on.
So we could even reference that here, just again, to highlight it, you know, so that you're not surprised.
Lisa, your, your questionnaire that you're asked every single day for E S Y.
Yep.
Does it, does it include that question or something like that?
The travel question?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's on page twenty-eight. It says, "The parents have to do a daily student checklist," and it says, um, "They have to check off if the child's not feeling well, have not administered any Advil, Motrin, any signs or symptoms. In the past fourteen days, my child has not been exposed to anyone with any of the following symptoms: fever, cough, shortness of breath, sore throat, et cetera. And in the past fourteen days, my child has not been exposed to anyone with a known diagnosis of COVID nineteen." Because I don't think it does say though, out of state.
Yeah, that's different than.
It should. That's where we could add that, the travel.
I think it's, I think it should as well.
I think it should.
And I think when you ask that, it should be clear that there should be a added sentence that, you know, if you have traveled out of state, you'll be asked to provide a negative COVID test.
Or be remote. And for the fourteen days.
Be remote until you provide a negative COVID test.
So are you, do you think, you want me to add that to what I wrote, or you want Susan to add that where she is? The section she's.
Maybe both.
I was gonna say both, yeah.
Cover bases.
No, I also just ask, you know, with extended school year, you have forty-two kids, probably slightly less than forty-two families where you had compliance on this form daily or weekly, how are we gonna do this with a couple thousand kids? Are we doing this every day, or are we doing this?
Well, the, it's.
E S Y, it was a Google form every day.
But this, this student checklist is, does not need to be sent in. This is what parents have to do each day with their kids, because you're right, there is, we can't collect that every day. We don't think we could have an app where we submit that? There's plenty of apps out there where we could do that.
And it keeps reminding you if you don't submit it, because it's a nightmare if five hundred people don't send it in.
So I think we'll work with Dan on finding out if we have the technological capacity to collect it a different way.
Would it make sense for me to read this again with the edits, or does anyone else have any concerns or edits about the email I sent?
No, I think, I don't think you need to read it again. I think that was, I think that's good, and I think everyone's had an opportunity to add or clarify.
Okay, so the only thing I added was, you know, in the fourteen, you know, be careful about exposure in the fourteen days before school starts and thereafter. I just added and thereafter.
Okay.
Um, and then I also added after the four, the mention of the fourteen days, I said, "Please be aware, you will be asked about travel." And then I changed, and then I said, "As of August tenth, low-risk states include blah, blah, blah," and then it's got the website.
Okay, well, that's good.
I think you need to be more specific about you will be asked about travel outside the state of Massachusetts.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
And I think that's where you, well, whether it's there in Susan's, you know, if you have traveled, if you and your family or child have traveled outside, you'll be asked to provide a negative COVID test.
Oh, okay, so I need to say you're, you'll be required to quarantine at home for fourteen days or provide a negative.
Yeah, 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 thank you.
Maybe we could provide the site map for where those, um, testing sites are.
Put a link.
There. Well, there could be a link that would update it, right?
I would just provide a link, yeah, because it can change. I mean, right now, there's a pop-up drive-through one in Milford. There is one in Framingham, but that, you know, those could change.
Keith?
Um, this is from Lynn, because obviously everybody's watching with, uh, very intently. And the parents have to sign an agreement, which will be on Power School at the beginning of the year, where they are agreeing to comply, and if they don't comply, then again, that agreement has been broken. So, you know, we, 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 we have plans for this kind of already, you know, and so, and not that an app isn't necessarily a great idea, but, you know, again, what are we gonna do with the data? And how timely is it gonna be? And are we gonna be able to, you know, stop a student at the door if their parent hasn't signed into the app? And I, I think it's an expectation that's just not, gonna be something either we can meet um, or, uh, uh, it just may not do anything for us, that's all.
Maybe in our, sorry, I just was gonna ask that maybe when we ask people to, um, in this next week, when we're asking people to decide whether they want to be remote or hybrid or otherwise, that we explicitly state that in there, that we are trusting that they are going to adhere to these safety protocols in order to protect the entire community, so that their kids continue to go to school as in-person as much as possible.
And we can use this language we just worked on, since we just vetted it through all of us.
I also just want to say that, you know, look, Governor Baker has no idea that I just went to Indiana with my family to drop a kid off for college and that I was there for a week. We drove across three states to get back, and none of them, except New York, were on the okay list. And it was up to us as a family to decide we were gonna go get tested. But I think the onus of that, um, being put on, on families, you know, he, he can't go out and determine whether I made that drive. That's my point. And nor can we easily determine if every single family is complying. But I think when that expectation is put out there and it's put in writing again and again, and we make that message, a very clear message to families, then it's more top of mind. And then I think people will hopefully take it more seriously.
Agreed.
Can he really, you know, can he really go out and find me five hundred dollars? Well, not unless he really knows that I did make the travel, but.
But the more we emphasize this, the more families are gonna think twice about having twenty people over to their house on.
Yes, agreed.
A weekend.
I agree.
Blah, blah, blah.
So I think we, we set it up. If we can get an app, super. If it's a Google form, whatever. Will we be able to track every single individual down? Probably not.
Yeah, I think it does go back to the same with virtual learning. Parents have to, if they're signing away, it's their legal obligation to do what they sign that they are going to do. And the same with travel restrictions, as well as virtual learning, um, not recording, all of those things. So I agree with you. We, we need to make that expectation very clear. It is very clear that parents have to sign off, if you look on that page twenty-eight link there, uh, the staff cell screen, and then the student checklist that on the bottom there is the place that they'd be signing on Power School. And and yes, frequent reminders, I think every time we communicate out, principals should be sending out reminders to parents, "Have a great weekend," or "Have a great," you know, but those, those kind of frequent reminders have to be in there. But you're right, we can't police every household. We have to trust people to police themselves.
But it's good to have it explicitly over and over and over, so parents aren't like, the day before school, like, what? I didn't know. I mean, we do, you know, I do think the communication piece is on us. But all right, I'm gonna send this. We're done with this. I think we should move on to the next topic.
Thank you, Lisa.
Are you ready? All right, let's continue at phase four. So this is page, I think you said twenty, Dawn, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. Peter, do you want to walk through this?
Sure, there's, so yeah, this, um, this talks about the kind of the staggering of, um, kids coming back. So it says, "On September sixteenth, students would begin in-person instruction in a staggered fashion to bring students back safely and effectively." Although the specifics of the plan for phasing in will likely be altered based upon feedback from staff, parent guardians, and union negotiations. In phase four, grade levels, uh, could be potentially started in a staggered fashion in the following manner. Grade two and three and grade eight would begin in-person instruction on Wednesday, September sixteenth. Grade one, five, and seven would begin in-person instruction on Thursday, September seventeenth. Kindergarten and grade four and six would begin in-person instruction on Friday, September eighteenth. And pre-K and high school students would begin in-person on Monday, September twenty-first. Grades and cohorts that are waiting in-person instruction will begin remotely, including some remote connections for pre-K and kindergarten and grade one students. We've tried to kind of tighten up, you know, we still want, felt that a staggered, um, entry would put us in the best position to safely bring kids back with, with smaller numbers to begin with, uh, but tried to tighten that up and reduce that high school. bring kids back with with smaller numbers to begin with, uh but tried to tighten that up and reduce that high school uh piece to just those three days.
So uh my question is, why did we select these grades to triage? And I see or prioritize, and I see that at the top, um you've selected grade two, grade three, grade eight. So we've selected one grade from each of three schools, but the high school sits empty for the first week. So I guess the question is, why did we select these grades? And why can't we bring at least the ninth graders back um on the sixteenth?
We selected the the grades, uh we we tried to go with kind of the oldest, typically the oldest grade in the in um the elementary and middle school, so that's the grade um three and eight um or the grade two and eight. We decided to uh go with grade three instead of grade five because grade three doesn't have a remote aspect. So um though we'll do some remote connections with the other grades that don't have remote aspects, it wouldn't be a full-fledged kind of remote experience. Uh so that's why we we opted to start with grade two at um a grade three at Miller instead of grade five. And then we kept on going, so um the grade eight is the oldest grade to go to grade seven. Uh then we added the grade five um at Miller, because it's the oldest in grade one. So it kept on going, typically going younger again, except for that uh distinction at Miller will be where we started with grade three instead of grade five again, because they do, grade, grade three is in-person instruction um as the primary model. So um we didn't want grade three kids who didn't really have a full-fledged hybrid um model to kind of not start um as 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 soon as we can with something.
So can we? I would like to add, so I would like to move grade nine at least, if not grade ten, to those first three days at some point, Cynthia?
Yeah, um ninth grade also often has classes with tenth grade as well. I don't think it's easy to separate the high school, because there might be, you know, some kids that are in tenth grade, they're taking algebra and some kids that are in ninth grade that are taking algebra et cetera, whatever their science courses, there's a lot of crossover. Not sure that's gonna be easy to do.
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to do it by cohort either way.
Right.
But still, I agree moving them sooner rather than later. Having said that, ninth grade is the grade that least mixes with other grades because they have a very set curriculum. So typically, there isn't a lot of mixing with even sophomores. But I do think that trying to get the freshmen back sooner, like leaving them until the twenty first, I I feel like it's late, I do.
Um can we also just write explicitly that great, the grades that are awaiting in-person will beginning, will begin school on September sixteenth, right? Because we don't say that.
Yeah, I could add it to that last.
Thank you.
I do think part of this discussion is that we have to look to the D E S C guidance, which is a safe return for as many students as possible in person. And that we also have to look to the community, which has told us that seventy six point eight percent of one thousand nine hundred and fifty seven families think it's safe for an in-person return. And I think that um we are concerned that we might lose in-person days the farther we get into October or November. So I do think every day matters for developing rapport and having in-person instruction. Um I think that the high school is a three-quarter hybrid program and a one-quarter remote program, based on what we've just talked about with the four blocks. So I am really reluctant to hold them back for another week. I I I have heard the argument of starting everyone remote, but I think that in FaceTime is important. I am more in favor of starting that first week with them, because I think it's really important to to develop that in-person time and every day in um will be valuable for them. A- and we're balancing that with um the the idea that you're starting everyone remote and what was talked about before. I I I think our hybrid plan has um less instructional time than a regular pre-pandemic year, but that's really across the board. But I I really do want those days back, whether it's just for ninth grade or for ninth through twelfth grade.
So I I I can validate your concern for sure. I I'm concerned about pushing us or backing us into a corner that we are, because we are, we're really trying to drive in the safety factor and giving us time to stagger some of the start dates allows us to have more hands on deck, if you will, um staff in the buildings to help support all of these different um starts and stops. It is two additional days, I hear what you're saying, because um the cohort A would have only, would have a one, one in-person day on Wednesday, so they're losing one day of in-person that week. And cohort B would be losing two days of in-person instruction that week, because they would be doing Thursday, Friday in for in-person um in other weeks.
I hear that too, but we also have a staggered start, it's called hybrid, half the kids are in. Um in addition, we have ten planning days and we still have several weeks um before school starts. So in balancing all of that with D E S C's guidelines, that the preference is for as many students to return um as possible in person, I strongly feel that at the bare minimum, ninth grade goes back that first week. I I I am advocating for all four grades to go back that week, but but I really, I think we all have to talk about this more. Um but at least those ninth graders who, you know, they had an orientation in March, it's been months. It'll be five months before they walk through those doors again. And and I know, and I understand that some sophomores would have to remote into those classes, but that also could be great troubleshooting for an entire high school where half of the kids will be remoting in and half will be live, right? So at least within that freshman um class with a few sophomores, you can have teacher feedback about what works and doesn't work for those few sophomores that would have to remote into a freshman class, but or or a class with freshmen.
One advantage to bringing back the ninth graders i- is that quite honestly, it gives you the smallest population to sort of trial the implementation plan at the high school. If you could bring back the ninth graders for even one or two of those days, that's fewer students than you would have at any point in time in the future with the hybrid model. And it may give you a quick assessment on how are the traffic patterns working? How how are you gonna manage bathroom time, which by the way, Dawn, side note, I think that ten minutes might be necessary because team of everybody in the bathroom, you know, the way we used to, but you know, things like that, like it'll give you a quick test of just if you if you need to make any adjustments before you bring back the full hybrid cohort to the high school. Um so I do think there's merit in trying to get the ninth graders back in the building before the twenty first um if you can, so.
Lisa. I agree, I think that there's um, I think that's a reasonable compromise to try to get the, at least the ninth graders back in in person sooner rather than later. Knowing that, you know, with all of this, again, we may have to shift who knows how many components of this plan.
Um can I just say that uh when I was looking at different models that were happening around districts around us, um Franklin is uh planning a fully remote start and their staggered cohorts will be starting with September um sixteenth, high need students. September thirtieth, K um grades K and grade one. October nineteenth, grades two through three and grade six. October twenty sixth, grades four, five, seven and eight. And November nineteenth is when they bring back the high school. So they're not bringing back their high schoolers until November nineteenth. So I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there just to give, offer some comparison about how other people are staggering their starts.
And I would say they're stupid, I really would. And I and I mean that disrespectfully, that's stupid. Um I think it's disappoint, I just, as I shared with um Peter and Susan this morning, our high school students have four, three, two, or one year left to get that quality education that they are owed and deserved. And every day counts and safety counts, I'm not discounting safety at all. But I really those students, they, we every student is important, every grade level is important, but they have the least amount of time to get what they need before we graduate them out into the world. And I'm sorry, I'm passionate about this and I don't care what other districts do, this is Holliston and we need to care about our kids.
Stacy, I am not suggesting that we do that. I am just offering for the community to see that there are different ways that people are doing this from different districts. And I just want them to be mindful that, you know, we've been looking at all of these different, what different districts are doing. And we're obviously beating to our own drum, because we're looking at what's affecting Holliston and how our infection rates are. It's very specific to our needs here. And I do agree.
I couldn't agree more with Stacy. I feel like the high school, you know, I get it, they're younger children. I understand the critical priorities for getting them back to the school and the high need students. I totally, totally support that and understand that. But I can't help but feel like we are de-prioritizing our high school students and I am concerned about that. And I don't have one anymore, but if I did, I'd be deeply concerned about this. And the reason is that I think the lack of transportation is gonna shut them down by November, because you can't expect kids to be walking two and three miles to get home when it's ten below. And by November, our weather, you know, how we have a, we had a lizard a few years ago on Halloween, you know? It can be highly variable and we're not gonna provide transportation. And that's gonna force them back indoors, it's gonna force us into a remote model at some point unless something dramatically changes with the pandemic. These kids need to get back into the classroom and we are putting ourselves in a really tough place to be able to achieve that with every day that we sacrifice. And I don't care what the council's doing, I don't, I don't wanna call them stupid, I'm sure they put a lot of thought into it, it's a much bigger district. But I I I I think we have to look at our own community, our own needs, our own um our own infection rates, et cetera, et cetera, and work from there.
Okay, are we not raising hands anymore?
I guess not, sorry, Lisa.
No, that wasn't.
I tried, I tried in the beginning, but quite honestly.
I know, that, no, no, that wasn't directed at you, I just, Stacy, could you call on people, though? I know you have been some, but could we just go back to that?
Yes, and I've called on you three times now, go ahead, Lisa.
Um, I just, I respect your right to say anything you wanna say, Stacy, absolutely, but I just wanna disagree with the use of the word stupid. I think that, you know, Franklin has a very smart superintendent and I would never criticize someone for trying to be very safe. And um I think there, we all do feel very passionate about this, this is scary and unprecedented. And I certainly respect your right to use whatever language you wanna use, I just personally wanna disagree with that on the record.
Dawn. Did you raise your hand? Oh, okay. So where, what are we agreeing on for this language? Ellen, wait. Well, I just, I I don't think the administration can here and now evaluate how to bring back ninth graders. So I wouldn't wanna hold them accountable for changing that language immediately, but I'd like to see that as a key consideration following today. It wouldn't hold me up in terms of a vote, but maybe there's a contingency that they take a look at that and see if there's a way to bring back ninth graders a day or two earlier.
Yes, if we could, if we could try to um have that conversation outside of this meeting, we will work with the high school and see if we can come up with an idea for that.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Susan, to say that we bring back grades two, three and eight, oh, two, three, eight and grade nine for in-person instruction on Wednesday, September sixteenth. And then the default is to come back to us and explain why we can't bring back ninth grade for Wednesday and Thursday of that week or Wednesday and Friday of that week? Can we do, can we approach it that way? Can we put it in here that we would bring back ninth grade? And then if you run this to ground, i- i- in fairness, we are bringing back at least one grade per each of the other three schools. And with this compromise, what we're proposing is bringing back one grade in the high school. And then if if you run it to ground and it cannot be done, then we could always amend it too, right?
Sure, I just, I think, I'm trying not to get bogged down in the details, because just really trying to get to the, are we moving forward with the with the model in general? Because yes, there's, there are lots of details that we still need to iron out in days to come. And I think that Peter and I and the team can have a conversation. I I I I would tentatively say that one day for ninth grade to come in, whether it be Wednesday, Thursday or Friday, I'd wanna find out what what would be the easiest way to do it, but I just wanna, before we put it to writing, and I don't, I don't, I don't wanna overpromise until I have that conversation, Lisa.
Okay, Ellen, wait. Why don't we do this, leave that section highlighted and we evaluate, you know, put a, put a note in that, you know, there's a proposal on the table to try to bring back the ninth graders beforehand. And we vote on everything with that exception.
Well, I just, I just wanna clarify, the 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 school committee vote is really for the model itself, not the details of the plan. I I don't wanna, I'm not trying to discount anything that we've talked about here, but it it really, that's what I worry about is that, because details might change in the next few weeks and we are going to have to um.
Susan, respectfully, the model, you cannot possibly ask the committee to vote at the level of hybrid, not hybrid, you know what I'm saying? Like the devil is in the details and I would argue things like bring back dates are not just details and that this committee has to be able to stand up in front of the community and defend what is getting put into place and you want that. We want us to be able to say we stand behind the administration and a couple of these things are more, details are like, are the kids going down corridor A or B? Um details are, you know, things that are happening on a more specific level in the school building, but schedules and timing and transportation and who's coming back when. Not sure I would classify as just details. And I totally appreciate the situation that you're in. You can't make a decision like this on the spot against us. Um but I still think this committee has the obligation to understand, you know, how the hybrid model is going to be implemented, other ha- otherwise, how could we possibly vote on it?
I understood and um I agree with a lot of what's being said here. Um I certainly, I I have concerns with some other district plans as well as as Stacy indicated. I heard of one that's not starting at the high school because of safety reasons, they're keeping it until January fourth. We certainly are united in the fact that we want all of our students to get as much in-person learning as we can feasibly and safely do. So I think we're, I feel like we're all in agreement on that part. Um and it is, the details are overwhelming in many cases.
Lisa.
I think if we're voting on the plan as written, which was my understanding of what we're doing, and the plan specifies, you know, grades, whatever it is, two and eight, I think Dawn's ask is totally reasonable, that we put in ninth grade in some way, shape or form as the default um with the expectation that we're likely gonna be back amending this in some way, shape or form. I I think that's a reasonable compromise, I really do. And, you know, I don't have a high schooler, so I'm just listening to these arguments and and, you know, listening to them at face value. And I feel like that's a, that's a reasonable ask.
Dawn.
I am asking for ninth grade for also the safety reason of being able to see what that looks like. If you include them in the grade two, three, eight and ninth, begin in-person instruction on Wednesday, September sixteenth, then you have half of one quarter of your high school students coming in on the week of the sixteenth. And if we, if we see um issues or problems arising, you're bringing in students who've never been in that building before and you, they they really are gonna need the most time to acclimate to what this looks like. They they really don't know where the. They, they really don't know where the science classrooms are or that they have to go upstairs and then go all the way around. I am in favor of including them on September 16th, also because we don't meet again until August 20th. I think it's fair to set that expectation for the community that the ninth graders will start on the 16th. You'd have half of the ninth graders. So one quarter, half of one quarter of the school starting. And then they would get in for one other day that week. And then you would have that feedback from the teachers. The administration would see how it works that week and you'd have time for improvements before Monday, September 21st. And if you come to, back to us on August 20th and you've run this to ground and there's additional reasons that you want us to weigh, this conversation hasn't ended. We still want, we, we want to hear those and reflect on them. But for families to plan, I think it's fair for that, for the ninth grade families to plan on the 16th or the 17th or 18th, depending on which cohort you are in, to start that week.
Fair enough.
I do think it has, I do think it has to be by cohort. We can't just say the whole grade. It could, you know, it'll be split by the alphabetical cohort.
Yeah, so cohort A and then cohort B another day. Otherwise it won't, but just two days because then otherwise it won't be fair to the other grade, right? Because if you got like Thursday and Friday, cohort B gets Thursday and Friday and cohort A only gets one day.
But I think you could say ninth grade cohort A, ninth grade cohort B and do that. And again, it gives you a really tiny cohort to deal with to see how everything's working in the school. And yes, those kids would get the chance to, they, they're going to present the biggest challenge when everybody comes back because they have no clue what they're doing up there. So I think Dawn's right about that. Trying to get them more familiar with the physical setting and the constraints would be helpful.
So I, I think, I think what we're being asked is to do, um, we would, based on what your discussion is, that you would try to do ninth, half cohort A would be Wednesday and cohort B would be Friday, is what you're asking.
Yes, please.
So if you can allow me to vet that outside our meeting, just to, and get back to you on it, just to see if there are anything else that we haven't thought about. Logistically speaking.
Thank you. So the next section is the school use of facilities. Again, I don't have the page number because I'm looking at it from my phone. In order to maximize learning spaces and take advantage of having children out in the fresh air, we will be creating outdoor learning spaces. We may utilize chairs, tents, and other structures to facilitate this alternative learning opportunity. Most classrooms will have specific designated locations for their outdoor use. Any questions or suggestions to that?
It's page 35, just to.
Thank you. Thank you.
I love that we added that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's good. And are we, I'm just scrolling, so my apologies. Are there any other areas that have been modified?
I don't believe so.
That was, that was the last one. Okay. So thank you for those changes and modifications. Thank you for the lively discussion. Are there any other questions that you want addressed before we take the vote on that? Ann-Louise?
It's not a question. I just think it's important for the community to know again that our vote, one way or the other, is really on this plan at this date that we have something to submit to Desi. And that over the next several days and weeks, it will be refined further. So this is not lost in stone. It's just giving, it's getting up through the next gate to plan at a deeper level. Is that an accurate way to say that, Dr. Cuska?
Correct. Which is why, um, to Lisa's suggestion, we move that disclaimer front and center. Because I think it is well worth parents hearing that, that we are doing our best to try to offer this model, but there are other considerations that may impact the final outcome of that. So yes, I think the more we say it, it just, as you, as you as parents have to deal with, we don't want our parents locked into a schedule right now that may not come to fruition. And I think it's, it's unfortunate that we can't give them that definitive answer, but until we get the financial pieces and all the other pieces in place, then we have to, um, let them know that.
Cynthia?
Thank you. Um, Dr. Cuska, can we just, um, clarify our next steps? So after we, um, we vote on this, what is the next, um, expectation for our parents within the community or a survey is going to go out asking parents about how they would like to have their students start school either remote or hybrid, et cetera?
Yes, we'll, we will need to get parents to firm up, um, and let us know for sure which students are not going to, are going to be remote and get that number exactly determined as well as the transportation piece. So that survey will have to get, that's going to happen really fast, I would imagine, um, by the end of the week. And then once we have those numbers, and obviously we still have to do some, um, impact bargaining in this process as well. So there's going to be some dates coming up shortly on that matter. So the, the next steps are going to happen pretty quickly and hopefully we'll be able to give parents a better, um, a better understanding of what the feasibility of this plan is to start, and then they can start to narrow down anything that they have to with childcare and, and issues like that.
And Susan, do you have, do you have dates, proposed dates where you're going to do build, building-based Q and As with both staff and parents? Do you have those?
We did not get the dates yet, but that's something we've got to work. Thank you for reminding me because that is something we have to get out as well. Hopefully, hopefully, starting next week.
Lisa?
Just, I know we've, we've said this before, but I think it bears repeating. I just want to thank, um, Susan, Keith, Peter, and all the building administrators again for trying to do, we're asking you to do the near impossible. And I know that from all the questions and comments I'm getting from, um, parents, I know that there is absolutely no way we're going to make everyone happy. Um, this is unprecedented and I think you guys have done all an amazing job. And thank you to everyone who served on the subcommittees to work on this plan.
Second. Dawn?
I also wanted to again reiterate my thanks for it because one of the things that I thought was very innovative here is that you are not forcing everyone remote and you are not forcing everyone hybrid. And as difficult as it is for this community to now choose, that choice is being put to you. And I really applaud all of the work that went into that and the creative thinking in order to allow that. Because when surveyed in mid-July, we had over 1,900 families say they wanted in-person learning. And we're working off of, none of us are epidemiologists here, um, but we are working off of what Desi provided us as of June 25th in terms of wanting a safe return for as many students as possible in person. So thank you for doing that, but being flexible enough to allow families that need that remote option to have it. And I really hope that there's some flexibility to move from hybrid into remote as situation, as, as circumstances change.
Catherine or Andy, do you have any other thoughts or questions?
No, I'm good. I, I'm happy that we're hopefully going to get this, uh, this moving today, which will allow teachers and administrators to move on to some of the, some of the details that one, we don't have answers for, two, working on, you know, specifics of curriculum and delivery and those types of things. So I think, I think with recognition that we're in process, that this will change, I think it gives, gives us a stake in the ground that we can start moving forward from. So I'm, I'm in support of our vote and I think that we can, we can certainly make, make adjustments as we go.
Thank you. Catherine?
I just, um, I'm glad that we're at least considering moving the, um, the ninth graders into the first week phase in plan. Um, I think that's a really smart, um, opportunity to explore. Um, and then I know at the risk of being redundant, um, I just wanted to say, reiterate again, that for some people, the, the, having to sign the waiver for the, you know, the upload live zooming in class is actually a big piece of how they will make their decision. Um, so I know, um, Dr. Cuska, you said you, you weren't sure about, um, what that means if people don't want to sign the paper. But I think for some people, like, that's, that's the, you know, the decision is that point exactly. So, um, if we decide to pull people again to make a decision, I think we need that information first so that they can use that as the basis of their decision. I know that some people are waiting for that to make their decision.
I hear what you're saying. I, I feel like the in-person learners and the remote learners, it's the same issue because if I'm the student zooming and remoting into class, whether I'm in person or remote, it's, I worry, you know, all students have to sign that because we, we have confidentiality and, um, privacy issues and parents. I, I think what you're saying is if I'm the parent that chose in-person and now some of the other students don't sign it, I'm going to make my child remote. Is that what you're saying? Potentially?
Yeah, so I, um, some of the, the conversations have been around, um, concerns for behavioral issues when the students are in school. Um, and basically that people have been worried that, or, or thinking about the fact that some of those behavioral issues will be broadcast to the community if there is a live camera on in a classroom. And I know, because my own son went to E S Y, I know that, you know, that has its own, it's, it's not a camera in the back of the room that's broadcasting the whole class. I know that there's a specific mechanics to that setup. I'm just saying that there's some people who are using that decision as whether to go remote or go in-person, um, as I'm understanding it. So I'm, I'm saying this not because I'm, I want an answer right now, but I, I know you need to check and see, but that, I know that some people are waiting for that information to make the decision.
Can I make a suggestion on that? Before the waiver, I, I think, because I'm not sure what we're, it's not clear what people would be waiving, if you will. Um, it's not like a public photography waiver where you give a waiver to have your child photographed as part of the soccer team. Um, and then it can be used in the newspapers. Uh, this is an entirely different scenario. So I, I would suggest two things and then, and then maybe there's a waiver that comes out of it, but I think the first thing is an accurate description and definition of what remote learning constitutes, what the technical setup will be, and the privacy measures that will be put in place and how that differs from public live streaming. And the sooner we can get that out to parents, um, the better we should be able to address concerns. And then in parallel, if we need to, we can work with Andy Wa to have him potentially write a waiver, but I think if we can address it by clarifying what this is, there may not be anything to waive, if that makes any sense.
Yeah. And I think.
Any, any more than, any more than there would be if, if a child was attending ordinary school, because that is what this will be. There is no public, anybody zooming in from the community.
I agree. And I think, I, I probably would want to use waiver first. I'm not really thinking of it as a waiver. I'm thinking, what is our acceptable use policy? That's where we need to, that language, it needs to be firmed up because that's part of acceptable use, what parents at home with their students that are remote and can and cannot do. I think that's.
And maybe getting them to sign something saying, I understand the acceptable use policy, that's a little bit different than waiving. Because I don't, I actually don't believe, I'm not the attorney, Dawn, because I don't believe there's a waiver here to be executed. I think it's more an understanding of the policy. Um, and we have to be very clear about what we're doing to protect students, whether they're in the classroom or in the home setting, if, you know, so it's, it's either way. Um, but maybe we can get that drafted through Dan, get it out to the committee as a first pass or, you know, as soon as we can so that we can have parents, um, informed by that piece. Because you're, you're probably right, Catherine. It's probably something some parents are thinking about. So yeah, we should get something to them.
Yeah, I think it's just, it's an information need, right? Just like, it's just a whole, like they need, people need, so specifically some of the questions that I was getting was, I, you know, I never signed the photo release. I never signed it. So why am I going to let my kid be on Zoom? And I had said, you know, that's, it's going to be a different setup, but I didn't feel like I had all the information to give them. So that's why I'm, I'm bringing it up. I just, I think people need a better picture of what it's going to look like, what it means, what are their legal rights, what are the legal ramifications, what will happen if they don't, absolutely don't want their child anywhere on or near a camera, then what happens? I just, again, I'm agreeing with you, Ann-Louise, just more information, I think is what people need.
Yeah, yeah. I agree. Like, and I should say, we're not snapshotting the Zoom screen because I was surprised to see myself in the Holliston reporter. I'm glad that I, I was sitting up and not in my workout clothes.
Are there any other questions or clarifications? Dawn?
One more time, if you are a high school student and, um, and it's pouring and it's 12:43 and you were just released and you don't have a ride and you can't walk or bike home in time, are there places for you to stay so that you can then remote into that fourth block? I just want to make sure I understand that.
That's the plan.
Okay.
You know, you'll be able to purchase a lunch. It'll be a bag lunch, whether you consume it in the cafeteria, maybe in a hallway or someplace else. I mean, there will be places for you to go. You know, we're not, we're not, uh, throwing everyone out of the building because we understand that there will be people left behind, students left behind, so.
Thank you, Keith.
Is there a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 reopening plan model as discussed ad nauseam per this meeting?
And.
And what?
And as amended.
Yeah, that's good. I thought you moved it.
Moved by Dawn.
No, sorry.
Seconded by Ann-Louise.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Ann-Louise. Roll call, vote all in favor, Ms. Koshen.
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Hansdahl?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes. Dr. Cuska, you may go ahead and submit that model.
And can we get the new version posted online to replace, uh, the first draft as soon as feasible?
We will get that up, um, probably tonight after we make the changes and submit.
Thank you.
And one thing that I just want to share with the public that I figured out this weekend, we had mentioned that the slides from the presentation on Monday were also going to be posted. They are in fact posted, but if you are using a mobile device, you need to scroll all the way down to see them. So for a week, I was checking to see where the slides were and reached out to Dr. Cuska and said, hey, I thought we were posting the slides. They've been there all along. You have to scroll down on your, on your mobile device, um, or other devices. So just as an FYI, they have been there and, um, you can see that all on the district website. In terms of next meeting, our next meeting is scheduled for August 20th. But I would like to just throw out the option there, do we need a check-in for next week? I know there's a lot of moving parts, um. Oh, wait a minute. Next week is the 20th. It is next week, never mind. Ann-Louise.
That's it.
Oh, I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to figure, I don't know what day it is. I'm trying to figure out what day it is. So next Thursday, um, we will have an update on, update on planning. Um, we are going to have someone from, um, oh, Safe, uh, the Safe Roots come talk to us about, um, Safe Roots to School Plan with, um, Tina Heine. Um, so we have invited, um, a representative from Safe Roots, Safe Roots to School to come and talk to us about plans for this coming year. We'll have warrants that I will share and, uh, Lisa?
Are we meeting in person?
No, not next week. We don't have to meet in person next week unless people want to, but I think we're all still trying to finish our, um, vacations and whatever else, our million meetings and whatever I'm comfortable with staying remote. Dawn?
I asked previously about traffic routes and Keith gave a great answer for each school and talked about what they were, had in mind. I'm wondering if for Miller. Um, I'm wondering if for Miller and Placentino, if there is any way to have an alternative route in and out for the staff, if we've looked at that at all, just meaning behind the school. Because if we are increasing traffic, especially with Miller, have we looked at that at all? Because the teachers will be trying to get in for that 7:30 start time and, and trying to get out. And if, if, if we could just take a look at that, and you probably have already, but just something to consider going behind the building, in between the playground and the building, to get them out and make sure they're not trying to get through all of what we anticipate is going to be traffic for drop-off and pickup.
The Miller time, that would make sense, um, just because students wouldn't be in school yet. I'll, I'll definitely look into it and, and.
Thank you, Keith. Lisa?
Can we get an update at the August 20th meeting on professional development? I've had a lot of questions about how virtual learning is going to look different, you know, than the crisis teaching that we did in the spring. And I think it'd be great if we could have some kind of update on what sort of professional development we're doing to help teachers get, you know, best practices around teaching remotely.
Peter, can you?
Yep, yep, we're trying to, we're trying to get to that, but, uh, and work with teachers on that. But yes, we'll, we'll give you, um, at least a preliminary, preliminary update, but we know it's obviously critical.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. With that, if there are not any other questions, is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved by Cynthia?
By Dawn.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Dawn. Roll call vote all in favor, Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Mrs. Listev, Listevnik, my apologies. Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. It is 10:53, this meeting is now adjourned. Have yourselves a wonderful day, everyone. See you next week.
Thank you.